Good evening, folks. The microphones are on, the cameras are rolling. Welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our city clerk to take the pledge.
Pledge?
No, I don't. Take the roll. Sorry. I was talking to the attorney, got all flustered.
Chuck Brown?
Here.
Mike Bruno?
Here.
Don Cummings?
Here.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Here.
Ian Kilburg?
Here.
Craig Maladra?
Here.
Richard Marx?
Here.
Mariscino?
Here.
Tom Simonian?
Here.
Ron Singer?
Here.
We have a full house this evening, and typical fashion, Mr. Conacek has arrived just in the nick of time. And joined by Mrs. Conacek, Susie. Mr. Conacek, would you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Come on up to the podium, Mr. Conacek. Does everyone know Dan Conacek?
No, sir.
He has been a resident of Geneva for what, six months now?
Four.
Four months?
Four months.
Well, Mr. Conacek, all of you should have his materials in an email I sent you earlier today. He comes highly recommended by the chairman, Mr. Art Candel, to fill the vacancy currently on the zoning board of appeals. He offices in downtown Geneva. He's an accomplished litigator, attorney, all-around good guy, father of what, nine, ten?
Ten.
Ten, ten?
Five.
Five children. Hangs out quite a bit at Aurelio's.
But most of all, I have a good wife.
Yes, you do. Susie, welcome. What else should we know about you, Dan?
That's it. I've known Art for how long? Twenty years?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. He was a key witness for me in a big trial, right? We won our trial.
Really?
Yes.
The old Sunset Manor.
Oh, I know. Familiar with the neighborhood. It's too bad about its condition, yes. That's a joke for people tuning in from Sunset Manor.
And they should know that you asked my son's date for homecoming.
I did. Live at a council meeting.
Yes.
They're still going steady, aren't they?
They are.
Isn't that something? She's still hasn't said yes yet, but they're still going steady, so.
That's all you need to know.
That's all we need to know, man. Well, we're delighted that you've stepped up, volunteered, and offered to assist, so thank you very much. Any questions or comments for Mr. Conacek?
What are you doing in your free time? Any biking, running, anything like that?
I...
That's a softball question.
He's a very good runner over here. Mr. Cummings, Don is one of the best runners. I run, bike, but most of all, I try to spend time with the kids, and that's hard these days.
Good answer.
Are you running in the marathon coming up?
No. Nope.
Smart move.
I spend a lot of time in Greencastle with my daughter, who's playing soccer for DePaul University.
DePaul with a W.
With a W.
He's an accomplished golfer, too.
I've actually had the pleasure of golfing when he was barefooted, and he still beat us all. It's unbelievable. What's your handicap nowadays?
It's high. Chuck and I, we have done well together.
I only had one response from when I sent out the applications. That was from Mr. Radovich. I said, "Tonight, we're nominating Mr. Conacek for the ZVA," and Chuck responded. I can't share with you what he responded, but you've got to FOIA that, Shorty, if you want to know what happened.
She will.
Do we have a motion for Mr. Conacek to be appointed? Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Singer makes the second. Any additional questions or comments? All in favor of the appointment, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Susie, good to see you.
Everybody.
And thank you, Mr. Candel, for the quick nomination. Appreciate it.
Full staff now.
Yes, indeed. Very exciting. You should've.
You should've.
But it's on TV.
Yeah. Yeah, don't stick around or anything. Go ahead. Have a good night. Okay. Item 3B is to hear from our trusted department head, Mr. Brian Shiber, regarding an update on the Public Works Department. How are you, sir?
I'm good, sir, and you?
Good. Welcome.
I'm standing here before you because I made the mistake of asking my superintendents who wanted to volunteer to be here. Of course, none of them stepped forward, so...
And none of them are here to support you either.
Exactly. So, last week, as I went struggling to find a topic for tonight in my spare time, I was -- I came across this presentation tonight, and I naturally assumed that this was going to be a review for all of you, and I thought that I would liven it up and add some information that I learned back in June. But then I learned tonight that you actually haven't seen this yet, so it is not a review. And don't ask me any tough questions on it, because this is Chris Bong's presentation. He's going to be doing this later this week for Channel 10, and this information will be on the city's website then for the residents, so...
Well, we have talked about snow and ice. It's only September, man.
Only September.
Where were you on Friday night?
Yeah, I know.
It's snow in St. Charles, I guess.
I was not outside, that's for sure.
So, this is titled, "City Geneva Snow and Ice Operations." And we're going to start off with just a review. Typically, I will not read every slide for you. I assume we'll make this as brief as possible, and you can read what's up there. Obviously, January is our worst month. Leading up December and February are not much better. Our equipment, the city has 12 large, 10 smaller ones, and then we also have some additional equipment that we use to maintain the downtown streets and the sidewalks. Our salt storage facility typically holds 2,000 tons. Last year, obviously, we ran through all of that, plus some. We struggled to make ends meet. We found some alternate suppliers, stretched it with adding some salt or sand to it, and we did get by. This year, we are going to take advantage of the existing contract we have, and we're going to -- there's a clause in there that allows us to expand up from our previous total another 20%, I believe, so even though our facility only holds 2,000 tons, we're going to request the full 2,800 tons, and then we'll be scrambling to find an alternate place to store it. We'll probably pull our salt or sand out of our bins, and we'll store some extra salt in there if we get it all delivered at once. That's probably the bigger key, is we probably won't get it all delivered all at once. They typically just kind of string us along and give us enough to keep us going. But you see, we do have a very favorable price for that tonnage. We've seen other surrounding communities are really struggling to get salt this year, and they're probably paying close to twice that if they can get it. So, we are in good shape, I feel, for our salt supply. Our routes. I apologize for the tiny quality of that map. This information will be on the city's website if you need to see further detail on it, but basically, this is the snow routes. We have several categories of snow routes. The snow routes are the main ones. These are the ones that have the highest priority. These are the ones that we put the big trucks on, and they occupy most of our time for us. Then the smaller roads, the secondary streets. You see, we have 200 lane miles of residential streets. These are typically the ones you'll probably hear the most complaints about, if any at all. Hopefully, you're not getting too many complaints from us. You see the notes there as far as what we typically -- how we typically treat those And then the smaller streets are the cul-de-sacs. These are the lowest priority for us. We typically hit these with the smaller pickup trucks, and we typically do not salt those either unless they get really bad. We also have a few alleys, dead ends. We try and keep those passable. Anybody stop me if I'm going too fast on this for you? Our downtown public sidewalks, we have a couple of small tractors that we use to keep the business sidewalks open up, and those have little salt hoppers on the back of them that we can use to apply salt to the sidewalks also. We also have our downtown public parking lots that we're responsible for clearing, and then we also use a contractor periodically. Again, this map is very small, I know. I apologize. See predominantly the community lots.
Mind if I ask a question during your presentation?
Please do.
Are they mostly plowed by the contractor or mostly by us?
It's -- my understanding is predominantly a contractor, but we do jump in there periodically and help them out.
So, the contractor's only doing it during the night, so if you had a heavy snowfall in the morning or something, you would top it off?
We would top it off, yeah.
Thank you.
That's my understanding, yes. Obviously, when we start getting heavier amounts, we do have some parking restrictions in place. You may be familiar with those signs, the snow routes, and it's all based on the amount of snowfall, whether it's no parking on just the snow routes, or if it's no parking at all on any streets. We do get some good participation and cooperation from the police department on that, too. Here's an example of like a typical half-inch snowfall, and when I say typical, there's really nothing typical about any snowfall event. Every single one is different from depending on what kind of road conditions we have, what time of day it comes, whether temperatures are rising or falling. So, it's a misnomer to say that it's a typical snowfall event, but this is what we look for if we're doing like a half-inch snowfall, if it's calling for that. Now, when we start getting into the bigger events, you'll see we break it down into what happens during the snowfall and even after the snowfall. I guess the most important thing to come away from that is that cleanup for a snowfall event like that can take us a full day just to go around and push all the snow curb to curb and do the cleanup on the intersections. For the larger events, you see what's going on there. We will pull the bigger trucks in there, and they'll actually pair up and start cleaning the streets out that way, and again, it's another eight-hour cleanup for that. That is the biggest portion of what Chris's presentation was, and coming up is the information I gleaned from a conference I attended back in June, and I thought this was interesting information, and I hope I don't bore you too much with this, but what this is coming from is from the Michigan Department of Transportation from a study they did back in 2012. They did an evaluation of what happens to the salt when it leaves the back of the truck, how does it fall on the road, and they analyzed this for different speeds. I'll proceed through several different graphs and show you the difference it makes between different speeds of the truck, different types of applicators, and most importantly, whether the salt is treated or untreated. Now, what you're looking at here, for the study itself, what the DOT did was they set up a section of roadway, striped it out with four-foot widths, and then they would bring their trucks down. They would completely clean the pavement first and then bring the trucks down and apply the salt at 25 miles an hour. We've got another chart coming after this for 35 miles an hour and 45 miles an hour. And what you see in the various colors represent the four-foot widths that are marked out on the roadway pavement. After the truck made its pass, they would go out with vacuums, and they would vacuum that entire four-foot width for a 100-foot section, and they were able to determine the weights of the salt that landed within that four-foot pass. So, the green portions you see there is the center of the pavement. That's two four-foot lanes. That's an eight-foot width right down the middle of the pavement. The yellow bars are the four feet on either side, and then the orange, excuse me, that represents the outer edge of the pavement. When you see red, the red represents salt that flew off the road into the grass area. So, this first one here is an untreated application going at 25 miles an hour, and you see they do a good job of keeping the salt right down the middle of the road. You see how large that -- those green bars are.
Excuse me, what do you mean by treated or untreated?
Salt is either treated or untreated. There's different kinds of treatments they do to it to speed up the salt process, the brining.
The melting?
The melting, and the treatment also makes the salt stick to the pavement better, too. We buy our salt, a large portion of it treated. There's a proprietary name for it, but that was the main gist of this study, was that you are much better off buying treated salt because it adheres to the roadway better, regardless of what -- however fast you're going. The treated salt sticks to the roadway better, and you're not spreading salt off the roadway. This is your 25 mile an hour pass. This is your 35, and you'll see the dramatic difference you see between the green bars now. You're seeing a lot more on the red where the salt is actually leaving the roadway, and then at 45, you see that it gets even worse. So, if you see a salt truck going 45 miles an hour, he's wasting as much salt as what he's actually applying, because you look at the top corner there, the -- a third of the salt there, 35.4% is actually leaving the roadway and getting off into the grass areas there. That's the main gist of what I wanted you to take away from looking at those three charts for untreated. Next up, we're going to look at some charts for the treated, and you see the significant improvement that treating the salt makes for getting it to actually stick to the roadway when it drops out. It doesn't bounce and scatter like untreated salt does. And you see at 25 miles an hour with the treated salt, we're keeping almost 78% of that salt on the roadway itself, and the studies are showing that nothing is leaving the roadway at 25 miles an hour. Now, when you go up to 35, you see that you're starting to lose some of that, and the salt is leaving the roadway now, and it's dramatically different again for the 45 miles an hour. There are different kinds of treatment out there, and every chemical supplier out there will try and convince you that theirs is the best. Perhaps you've seen some stories about use of molasses or beet juice, or even, I think the brewery in Aurora, I think, was even trying to use some of their malt or something that they tried using that. There are compounds out there that work better than others. We're happy with what we're using, and you'll see that we do pay a premium for that treated salt, but our opinion is that it's well worth the extra money. So, I don't know. I thought that information was interesting. I hope I didn't bore you too much with that.
Brian, the -- with the varying speeds of the vehicles, are the dispensers, do they somehow tie into vehicle speed, or do they just run one speed?
There are some that have that capability, yes, but my understanding is ours predominantly spin at the same rate.
Thank you.
And we are -- we enjoy the beet juice additive, don't we?
We've tried beet juice additive.
We received a lot of calls about why their cars were stained.
Yeah.
So, what do you think, this coming season?
I think we're well-prepared for this coming season.
No beet juice?
No beet juice.
Nothing from Penrose or Stockholms we're going to be using?
Nothing like that, no.
Do we have a running contract with our salt providers, or...?
We do. We're in the last year of our contract. We took the renewed option for this coming year, and that's why we were able to get our guaranteed quantity of 2,800 tons at that rate. We were lucky enough that we planned ahead and took that option.
So, when do you renew the contract at this point?
It'll be coming up here pretty quick for the following years, yeah. And I suspect we'll probably see a hefty increase for the coming years, too. So, with that, that's all I had planned for tonight, and again, I hope you found that as interesting as I did.
Brian, what does it take? Normally, eight, 16 hours to clear everything if it's two inches, three inches of snow? I mean, about that? I mean, because you get your first pass, you clear it, you make it passable, and then by the time you do curb to curb, it's a couple of days, isn't it?
It can be, yeah. I mean, if it's strictly just a one-time event where it starts and it stops in a couple hours, I mean, obviously, that's the easiest kind to do, but it depends on what time the snow is falling, if we have to deal with rush hour traffic, the time we bring the crews in. You know, guys will tell you they like to plow, you know, in the early morning hours so they don't have to deal with other cars on the roadway. So, it really depends on the event itself.
Mr. Kilburg?
Could you provide us with a little bit of an update on how our summer street projects have progressed? I understand that they are completed or nearing completion, and that I know that there was some late-arriving news from Springfield. There must be an election in the lurch about Highway 38. If you'd care to talk a little bit about those.
Sure. Our roadway program is done as far as laying down asphalt and doing the concrete work. We're down now to where we're just doing punchless items and doing restoration work in the areas that were dug up for water main improvements. So, percentage-wise, if I had to guess, I'd say we're probably 95% done. The difficult part is with restoration work, that's typically not a pay item for the contractor, so it's always difficult for us to get them back out and to do the cleanup stuff, but we're expecting to have that done, obviously, before snow flies. We like to warn people that we do our best with the restoration work. There will probably be some additional settlement in some of the trenches, but we'll be back in the spring to dress those up, and if we had to add seed or black dirt, we will do that. So, we're in good shape with this year's road program. Over the last two weeks, I've attended pre-con meetings at I.DOT Schaumburg headquarters for both Route 38 and today's pre-con meeting was for Route 31. Both projects are now slated for starting up next spring. The Route 38 project was not a surprise. We were expecting that to hold off because that's a large project. It basically goes from the river here in town all the way out to County Line Road. That's a ploidy construction that got that. So, again, that project will not start until next spring. We will probably come back to the council sometime in the next couple of months and talk to you and see if you have any interest in allowing the contractor to do overnight construction in the downtown area. It was a topic that was brought up to them, if they wanted to pursue it. Personally, I think it would be a good option to ease that construction process in our downtown area. It does mean that there will be lights, noise in the nighttime, but I think the trade-off for that, instead of trying to work during heavy traffic, is well worth it. But again, the contract will probably come back to us in a couple of months with that Route 31, the pre-con meeting was today. I talked to the contractor last week, and at that time, he was saying he was planning on starting that like this week, almost tomorrow, if he had his way. Today, at the pre-con meeting, he found out that I.DOT was not ready for him to start. They hadn't laid out any of the items or limits of the project, and it was going to take them a week to get that laid out for the contractor. So, during the course of the conversation, by the time they start working backwards from that and looking at the limitations of what kind of asphalt they were laying down on Route 31, they decided that they could not feasibly start the project this year and expect to get a good product out of it. They're going to slide that project back to starting next April. So, we could potentially have both Route 38 and Route 31 under construction at the same The Route 31 project, that's Geneva Construction doing that one. Both projects just involved a two-and-a-half-inch removal of the top surface and then relaying that same two-and-a-half inch with new asphalt. There'll be some minor patching associated with both contracts, some minor concrete repair work with curbs and sidewalks, but it's mostly just ripping off the top two-and-a-half and putting it back down again.
Could you remind us what part of Route 31?
Route 31 goes from Elizabeth all the way into Batavia.
Mr. Shiber, I believe I read somewhere where the Route 38 work would take approximately 75 working days, 78 working days?
75 working days.
75. Is there an estimated workday total for Route 31?
I.DOT is allowing them 40 working days for Route 31.
Forty, okay. And working days is working days. It's not business days.
Right.
Yeah, so...
In I.DOT terminology, yeah, there's a big difference between a calendar day and a working day.
Got it.
So, it seems like it's a very short period to allow that kind of construction, but it's actually a much longer period than what you would expect because they don't count rainouts, they don't include weekends, holidays, or anything like that, so...
Right. Any additional questions for Mr. Shiber?
Can I ask about the fireplaces?
Sure.
What's going on?
The parts for the inside of the fireplace have been ordered.
Okay.
We got authorization to proceed with that, so they've been ordered. This is not something you purchase off the shelf, so it's going to take about three or four weeks for those parts to get in, so I anticipate that probably mid to late October we'll be firing it up.
Okay. Thanks.
And that's working off of nuclear energy, right?
Solar.
Solar. We tried that once before here, and it didn't go over well. Hey, Dorothy?
Just back to the fireplace. Did you have decided that they're going to use glass enclosure?
No, we'll be using stainless steel screens.
Stainless steel screen. But you'll be able to see it?
Oh, yes.
The flame, apparently.
Yes.
Because I've seen it, I've seen, well, I don't know if they use glass, but in Oakbrook, they have those fireplaces, but they're a different design.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Mr. Kilburg?
As far as Emerald Ash Bore and sort of a status report on where we're at as far as tree removal this last year, sort of an estimate on the number of trees that we did remove this last year, looking forward, do we still have several hundred yet to remove? And I guess the other question is, is as we, as these dead trees become more and more of an issue on private property, and what are we doing to encourage residents to do something about those trees where it's obviously a property owner's issue, but because a lot of those trees hang over sidewalks and you're getting three or four years out, they are beginning to pose more and more of a safety risk to vehicles traveling those streets or pedestrians that are using those sidewalks. Any thoughts on that whole area?
You know, I don't have any numbers. I wasn't prepared. I apologize for that. I don't know how many trees we've got left, but I do know that as far as trees on private property, we've been dealing with the code enforcement people in the building department and working with the owners to try and get those dead trees down before they come down on their own. So, that's an activity through the building department and code enforcement. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman, anything? Thank you, Mr. Shiber.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Very much.
Item four, amendments to the agenda. Any amendments this evening by any member of the council and/or the audience? Item five is the omnibus... Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered under one motion.
So moved.
Alderman Marx makes that motion. Alderman Bruno makes the second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes unanimously. We skip down to, if no one objects, I think the just, uh, dispatch of item number ten, municipal bills for payment. I kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills for consideration.
Bills for payment total two million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars and twenty cents.
Mayor Burns, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual invoices that add up to that total can be found on the city's website under tonight's meeting packet.
Second.
Alderman Brown makes the motion to pay the bills as presented and available on our city's website and in our packets this evening. That motion was seconded by Alderman Flanagan. Any questions or comments from the council? Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Don Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilburg?
Aye.
Craig Maladra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simonian?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. We jump back to item nine A. Under other items and correspondence, um, I will read this carefully and slowly, then we'll ask everyone if they understand exactly what it is we're discussing this evening before continuing. Consider reprioritizing fiscal year capital projects and goals and re-appropriating, or excuse me, reappropriation of fiscal year twenty-fourteen dash fifteen budgeted funds in an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars to include, if possible, the road diet concept in the Geneva portion of the Route Thirty-one road resurfacing project through the Illinois Department of Transportation. Before I ask for a motion, does that clear to everyone what we may be considering this evening? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Marx? Seconded Simonian. The matter's on the floor. Mr. Schaber, of course, is here to elucidate us based on his meeting this morning with I.DOT, if necessary. But in essence, what we're asking the council to consider tonight is, number one, consensus and a vote on reprioritizing those capital items to, in essence, defer any work on the Fourth Street parking lots, which are over near the train station, and instead, reappropriate those funds for any and all costs we assume might be upwards of, but not to exceed two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars for what we've all come to known as the road diet on Route Thirty-one.
Just a quick question, since we've found out just recently, late this afternoon, or just now, that the work's really not going to be done in April, do we need to amend the budget? Because there probably will not be builder or, or right up for, till next year. Is that, I'm not sure, uh, just a question if we have to play with the budget.
Sure. Um, well, I can certainly ask, um, the Assistant City Minister to comment, but it's my impression that before we can host a public hearing, public meeting, actual quotes and estimates on costs, we should have our ducks in a row
Okay.
that there's actually money to pay for it.
Okay. I just, you know, it may be something that we push off till next year if we get fired or turned down.
And many of those expenses might actually occur before April, the engineering plans and those kinds of things, so you would need to have that budget in it.
Speaking of the funds, how much of this do we anticipate ever getting back or reimbursement from I.DOT? None or all or some?
That's a good question. Um, I can certainly have Mr. Simonian address that, but it's my impression, when this entire process began, excuse me, it was, uh, predicated on the fact, or on the assumption that there would be no cost to the city of Geneva per se. But it's our understanding, I think Mr. Schaber could probably echo this as well, that if we're asking I.DOT and/or the contractor to do something out of the ordinary, additional costs will be incurred by someone.
I, I think it's all a matter of timing.
Okay.
You know, if we can get out far enough ahead of I.DOT and get these approvals in place, if you proceed with the diet program, um, they will do the striping as a part of the project.
Okay. And what about the engineering?
The engineering, my understanding is they're still going to hold us to, um, supplying them with a, what they call a modified phase-one study. Uh, just a determination of, you know, what parameters are necessary and, and does this project meet the goals of what I.DOT's trying to accomplish with a typical diet project?
And... The modified phase-one engineer would be required to be submitted by the city?
Yeah, it, it would go under our sponsorship, yes. Um, it's nothing that, you know, if whatever party prepares that study, it's going to be reviewed by I.DOT. Um, so it doesn't matter if it comes from our consultant or another party.
Okay.
It's still going to have to be reviewed and approved by I.DOT.
Mr. Simonian and Mr. Brown?
I guess the best thing to do is give you a little history, how we've gotten here. When I was appointed, uh, back, it seems like, many years ago, um, I still owe some people some favors about that. Uh, one of my neighbors and constituent of, uh, uh, the Fifth Ward, a gentleman by the name of Bob Fitzsimmons, who was before us back in November, uh, requesting the, uh, city council to, uh, support this effort, came to myself and, uh, he, he's been trying to, uh, I guess, encourage and support, uh, this C- City of Geneva, uh, bikeway implementation plan back, that was adopted back in November of two thousand and five, which in it, it talks about, um, uh, it's also recommended that the road diet be considered for Illinois, uh, Thirty-one from Cheever Ave to Fabian. Road diet is four lanes, a four-lane road that is converted into two lanes. Goes into explanation of what a road diet is and said the road modification would improve access to the locations, uh, for bicyclists and might also improve vehicle traffic along Illinois Thirty-one by placing left-hand turning vehicles out of the traffic flow lanes. So, um, I, because I also live on Thirty-one, um, and I know what the ki- what, uh, traffic flow is like and how dangerous it is, um, because I could go in the hubcap collection business by collecting the hubcaps on a weekly basis that show up on my property. I said I would help at least begin investigate this, and then, of course, I went to the only source I knew at the time, my counterpart, Alderman Maladra, and said, "Would you mind sitting down and, and listening and tell me what you thought?" Because I think Craig was part of this whole bikeway implementation plan. So we, uh, we sat, we listened, and, uh, Bob said he was willing to spend his money, which he did, um, I think about six or seven thousand dollars, uh, working with Phil Bus and putting together the concept itself, of which back, I believe back in November, uh, they came to us and shared that concept with us because they knew that I.DOT would not listen to anybody unless the city was supportive of this measure. So, uh, we unanimously voted to, uh, support, support this concept. With the intention that, uh, the neighborhood, so to say, would pay for the, uh, initial phase, which it has, the conceptual part, and then the cost of engineering, as long as the city, if I got I.D.O.T. approval, would help support the efforts from that point forward. Um, so we went along this process. Dan, Dingus, Brian, Mary got involved, along with, uh, Bob and Phil and a number of others, and, uh, presented it to I.D.O.T., uh, to see what I.D.O.T.'s pulse was like. Batavia joined us in that meeting on, I shouldn't say, when I say us, not myself, I think it was Brian and Dan and, and, and city staff, uh, because they too wanted that concept to flow all the way through Batavia. And I believe I.D.O.T. said, "We're not interested in moving it any further south of Fabian." But was interested, or at least listening to, um, the, uh, our, our, our piece of it from down to the, uh, Forest Preserve. And, um, came back and said they, uh, are interested enough that they would be willing to take the next step, which is a modified phase-one engineering project, and that we could submit it back. Before, at the, at the direction of, uh, city staff, uh, before we got too deep into the weeds here, uh, they suggested that we needed to get a pulse of the community to find out, is it, are they in support of something like this? So what we did is, and that's what I handed out to you earlier, we took all the streets parallel to Thirty-one and perpendicular to Thirty-one that were going to impact this portion of the, of the, uh, concept, the ro- uh, the road diet. Uh, so we mailed out two-hundred-and-sixty-seven, uh, total mailers to these, whatever it is, two, four, sixty, about sixteen different streets, uh, to hold a meeting, uh, with myself, Alderman Maladra, the mayor, uh, Mike Donio on the county board, and, uh, Phil Bus and, and Bob Fitzsimmons. So we could see if we got, to get a pulse of, of whether these folks are in support of this or, uh, not to waste any more time or money in moving it forward. Twenty-one of those were returned. We got fifty-eight RSVPs for yes. Eleven emails, uh, no with comments, and I've attached those eleven emails so you can get a flavor of those comments. I, I received fourteen calls RSVP no's, all fourteen though voiced a, uh, positive, uh, in favor, support of the concept. We met on July ninth at six o'clock and, um, and I've shared with you my follow-up, uh, email to Craig and to the mayor on what my thoughts were. My thoughts were that about seventy percent of these folks in that meeting, uh, were either in favor of or neutral to the, to the concept. So we felt we could, we, we, we should at least entertain moving it forward a little further. Then comes an election year. Someone wants our votes. So now we're going to resurface Thirty-one a lot sooner than we anticipated. So we're stuck in this little quandary of, uh, do we move it? Do we not move it? Do we forget about it? Because once it gets resurfaced and striped, my guess is the chance of going back after it's resurfaced are going to be slim to none, that they're going to want to re-stripe again, especially if they're going to put in those reflector cleats into the roadway and everything else, so, um... So I, you know, I, I asked the mayor, uh, what he thought we should do, and, and, uh, and here we are. The news today, we didn't, you know, didn't know where we, we were going to walk into tonight saying they're going to start tomorrow. The good news, in my opinion, is that they're going to start in the spring, so we have a little breathing room. Doesn't mean I.D.O.T. is going to still support this concept, but at least it gives us some breathing room to, to get it in, get it in front of them. And for those folks who are watching this, who were at those meetings, that I promised I would keep them in touch, and they have no clue that this is on the agenda tonight, I apologize, but it in no way, shape or form impacts the public's involvement in this if we move forward because we're going to have to do all of those things still, I believe, with public hearings and everything else. Um, so for that, I apologize, but it was a timing issue that, um, not knowing the outcome of this morning's meeting dictated that we had to look at this. So that said, um, you know, I don't know where we stand, whether, how fast we have to move now, whether we can move this, uh, agree on, uh, reallocating some of this, and then if it doesn't go through, it goes back into the capital budget or goes back to the Fourth Street Parking Project or whatever. That I, that I don't know the procedural part of this equation. But that's where we are with the concept and the constituents who are mostly impacted by it, i.e. the folks who live around it, have voiced their opinion.
If I could jump in. So my characterization of where we're at, we're, we're at a, uh, we're at a pivotal point right now where we have to advance the conversation from one of opinions and ideas to one that's informed more by facts, hence the phase-one, modified phase-one engineering. On the, on the surface, at least to me, uh, this kind of looks like a no-brainer, but I'm not an engineer, I'm not a highway expert. So we need, we need the engineering done, we need the highway experts to weigh in so that we can find out if the benefits we expect to accrue from the project are actually possible or if indeed the project itself is actually possible. So the positive support we've received from the area most immediately affected by it, combined with the broader community appeal of an enhanced gateway into the city, et cetera, et cetera, in my mind, warrants progressing to that next step. Um, and in my mind, it is only a next step for those people who are watching tonight and were at that last meeting. This is not, this is not the city council saying, "Damn, that's it, let's get the road diet done in a month." This is getting the facts that we need to take, make sure that it's a good idea.
Alderman Kilburg? Alderman Brown? Alderman Cummings?
I thought I was first.
Oh, you're, forgive me, go ahead, excuse me. I'm all confused.
Not a problem. Go ahead.
Who the hell are you?
Uh, thank you. Just a simple point of clarification first. Uh, the way Alderman Simonian, the mayor, talked about it's a simple grind and overlay plus re-striping, whereas I thought originally we were talking about a raised median in this area. Has that part of the project now disappeared?
Well, I think in the original plans that they had presented to us, there was a, a raised median down at the entryway, along with, I don't know if it was a flashing light or what. That was the original concept. Whether I.D.O.T. buys into that or doesn't buy into that, or what they will or will not agree, I think that was the part of the equation that if one, once all the engineering was done and everything, that the city may have to incur some cost in some, in that piece.
When you talked to these two-hundred-and-sixty-seven people, were you talking about just re-striping or about a raised median?
We, we shared with them the exact same plan that was shared to us, which was with the raised median, that exact same map, nothing changed. It was the exact same project. But we did explain to them that, you know, we don't know what the final outcome. I mean, we, we talked about just a re-striping project, but it could be enhanced with a median, could be enhanced with a walkway, uh, crosswalk, uh, et cetera.
In my mind, my simple mind, I think that the raised median would be, add a considerable amount to the cost, which is not in the current contract with Geneva Construction.
Correct.
Now, I happen to think a raised median would look quite nice. We have one on the eastern gateway, if you think about it. We have a short section from Kirk Road down, almost halfway down to the McDonald's where there is a median, uh, and it has some grass planted in it. I don't know who keeps it up. It's not kept up well. So my second question would be, I happen to like a raised median, and if we did, who would be responsible to keep it up? I.e. who's responsible to keep up the one on our east entrance?
That'd be us. If we're going to make enhancements to a roadway that's not owned by us, we maintain those enhancements, much like we do on Randall Road.
Yeah, I noticed the one we have on, uh, Keenville, Kestling, Williamsburg, going west, has now been repaved over with bricks because it was a problem upkeeping it. Is that...
I think it was always bricks.
Does anybody know the history of that?
I, I thought it was always bricks.
It was actually removed, so...
Oh, yeah, and it was removed.
Yeah, it was, it was always bricks.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Kilburg.
Alderman Kilburg and Alderman Cummings? And Bruno?
So in other words, the two-hundred-and-eight thousand dollars that we're re-appropriating is for engineering? And would this be applied, then, to some of the costs of the project itself, or is this all designed?
I think that, I mean, I think if, if we go with the commitment that was presented to us, I think it's the responsibility of the quote-unquote neighborhood to deliver the phase-one engineering, the next phase of this. And then if the approval is, if it is approved at that point, and it's basically just a re-striping and there's no other costs and the re-striping timing... re-striping and there's no other costs, and the re-striping timing-wise is incorporated into the, there may be, there may not be any additional costs. If there are additional costs, I think that's a responsibility that we have to agree that we are willing to absorb. Now what that additional cost is, don't know until we get there.
So the purpose of the 208 is sort of like, it's for design work, which we expect to get reimbursed for, and it's banking it against things like a raised median or a crosswalk, things that the state wouldn't cover, but we might choose to implement.
So who's paying for this, these enhancements then? You're saying that essentially this is, we're spending $208,000 then for design, and then the residents along 31 then would be responsible for any, anything above and beyond just the normal resurfacing?
Now, let me, let me try to explain the process to date.
See, that's the thing is, I think we're getting a lot of information here at the 12th hour, and that a lot of the Aldermen have not been involved in this process, and we're trying to catch up tonight.
Understood, no problem at all. And the 12th hour was almost neat, necessary because of the timing of the technical meeting with IDOT. Here's the reality. We had no idea whether or not Geneva Construction and IDOT would say today, sure, we'll be happy to postpone construction of Route 31 and the repaving. In fact, it was likely that they would say probably no way, but thanks for asking. Prior to that meeting, I determined, Mr. Simoni, council, Mr. Schreiber as well, that if in fact there's at all an opportunity, let's put this on the agenda for consideration. If Mr. Schreiber would have said this evening, guess what, our technical meeting resulted in them saying, what are you nuts? We wouldn't be talking about this at all. In fact, I would have struck it from the agenda prior to tonight. IDOT's going to ask the city of Geneva, if you're serious about this, how will you, if necessary, pay for it? The question is, where's the money come from? It comes from the capital budget. We have $208,000 set aside for the 4th Street parking lot improvements, surfacing, striping, et cetera. Commuter lots, we know where all, they're all going to go. One thought was, can we use those funds already allocated, reappropriate on the off-chance we can succeed on this project? So the question tonight is, do you feel it's more of a priority to advance construction of the 4th Street lots, or more of a priority to reappropriate the money in a hold account to see where this thing comes down? That's really the question. I received several phone calls this afternoon from folks saying, wow, this is on the agenda, what's going on? And like Mr. Simoni, and I assured them that this was a, a Open Meetings Act type of gymnastics routine, because we couldn't discuss it unless it was on the agenda, certainly we couldn't take action. And if the council doesn't want to take action, they don't have to, but it's a matter of re-prioritizing what we've already committed to. That's really the question.
So, so what you're saying then is, is that if in fact we weren't interested in the diet, essentially there would be no additional cost to the city of Geneva, and then we'd...
That's correct.
We'd move forward with the projects, the parking lots and...
That's correct.
...resurfacing of those parking lots.
Exactly.
What, okay. I know there, you know, I think the 31 really impacts the entire community, it's just not the residents along Route 31.
Agreed.
That should, I think should have an opportunity to, to voice their opinion as relates to improvements, if in fact these are improvements to, to that thoroughfare. And I think, you know, I think some of the concerns that I've heard is, is that this is, is this project to facilitate a bike, bike lane similar to Bent Tree? Or is this really intent on moving traffic more efficiently through Geneva, getting people to work, getting people to school, getting people to the train? And have some of the initial concerns that were expressed 18 months ago, as it relates to emergency vehicles, buses, garbage trucks, have any of those been addressed yet before we invest $208,000 in, in trying to, to move this ball down the road? And I haven't heard or seen anything to address those concerns yet, and I believe probably some of these, I wasn't at the meeting, but I believe some of these same, these same concerns were raised back in July when this special committee, or whatever we want to call it, was called to, to meet with residents and have that discussion. And I guess I would be interested in, in learning a little bit more about this from a balcony perspective as, as it relates to the city engineer, or someone that might be able to provide some additional input. I guess from what you're saying is, is that IDOT is open to it, and they feel that it's feasible.
Provided the results of the modified Phase One back that up, yes.
What is the modified, modified...
Mr. Schreiber, if you could use the microphone.
Modified Phase One.
Yeah, we asked IDOT the same question, what is the modified Phase One? Nobody had really heard of that.
So it's a legitimate question?
It is a legitimate question. And we had, we had to get a consultant to contact IDOT directly and find out, you know, what exactly does IDOT consider to be a modified Phase One? The consultant got that information from IDOT, and we actually had a proposal back from one of the consultants. Going by memory, I, I thought the, the cost was like $30,000 for the, for the modified Phase One.
So what's the difference between $30,000 and $208,000?
That would strictly be for the Phase One, anything else I would assume would be applied towards...
The project itself.
Yes, sir.
So, so it's conceivable that if in fact we did all the preliminary work in the design phase, it's conceivable that we could get down this road, and then all of a sudden IDOT would say nada, that this isn't going to work, and we're back to Plan One, which would be just cutting back two and a half inches and resurfacing and putting down lines again. So in other words, this is, there is a gamble or a risk associated with this?
I think that's fair assessment, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the biggest gamble right now is probably time and not resources, because there is no, while we can appropriate the money and put it into account, we're not going to spend a dime until, to your point, the entire community's had a chance to chime in. Because when the meeting was held back in July, there were several folks from nowhere in the neighborhood who, who had great concern about, you know, what are you talking about? And we had pledged to them at that evening, and again today on the phone with others, that when and if we advance this idea for public consumption, there will definitely be public consumption. Right, so.
But let's, if we can take...
I thought I had...
Yes, you do.
So in other words, there is a bike lane on Route 31 that would be incorporated into this phase?
Might I, might I jump, answer that one for him?
Short answer is, we don't know.
Well, no, the, the, the thing I would take issue with, and I've heard the same thing Dean has, is that this is all about a bike lane, and that's incorrect. It's about calming traffic, it's about improving safety, it's about improving the aesthetics of the east gateway, and it also is able to capture a goal that we set in 2005, to get a bike lane along that, along that corridor. Bikes currently, I mean, it's basically there up to a point, and then everybody has to head down to people's driveways to get to the river. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that the bikeway is paramount, it's ancillary, the paramount purpose is traffic calming, safety, and aesthetics for the gateway. And so when you hear otherwise, if you could emphasize those three points, that would be helpful.
I have other questions, but I won't, I don't want to dominate it, so.
Mr. Cummings.
I, I like, I'm always attracted to an idea where, where there's very little risk and there seems to be some potential reward. And if we, if we sideline $208,000 and look into this, and if it doesn't work, we pull it back, that seems like a reasonable risk. But I remember looking at different studies, so moving beyond the 208, I thought, does this even potentially seem like a good idea? Other than aesthetics and maybe serving the bikers and maybe, and, and I, and I had all these sites earmarked and all that bookmarked, which I can't find, but I finally, I found one of them, which is Highway Safety Institute, Highway Safety Information System, part of U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration. It's proven that these road diets calm traffic, they increase pedestrian safety, and they increase vehicular safety. And so, number one, are we looking long-term towards something that seems to make safety sense? Yes, it, it does. Will it help bike lanes, turn lanes, traffic? Will it slow traffic down? Yes. This is a huge study nationwide, and the figures go anywhere from 29% reduction in, in accidents to as high as 47% reduction. So I think if we, if we have a good end game out there, and it doesn't necessarily cost us anything to look into this, I think it's a do, I think it's a, I think it's a yes. It's why I'd be in favor of pushing ahead and, and taking a harder look at this, and diverting the money so that we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the left side, Alderman Brown, then Bruno?
Alderman, Bruno, please go for me, I've already had my chance.
Just so, just so I'm clear here, the, the modified Phase One, that is separate from engineering, or that includes engineering?
It would involve some engineering, but if it's, if it comes down to a project that involves strictly re-striping, there wouldn't be a great deal of engineering associated with that. I mean, that would be a simple sketch plan.
And to Alderman Simoni, and you're saying the, the neighborhood has agreed to pick up the costs of engineering on this?
The, the, as it was presented, as it was presented to us, which we agreed, that no taxpayer dollars would be used to get it to IDOT to find out if this was feasible, they would be willing to share, you know, pick up that cost, which included the first phase, which they got the concept part of the equation. They got it to IDOT to pique their curiosity enough to say, we're willing to, we're willing to advance it to a modified Phase One, whatever that is. But now we know what that is, and the, whether you want to call it the neighborhood, or a couple of Good Samaritans or whatever, would be willing to pick that part of it up. And I think Alderman Cummings summed it up, there's no, there's really not anything at risk until we find out if there needs to be anything at risk, and at that time we can make a decision whether, you know, between hearing from the public and finding out exactly what the costs are, whether we want to participate any further.
Thank you, that, that answers my primary question then. So yeah, there is, there seems to be very little risk here, other than maybe some months of missed opportunity with 4th Street parking. Clearly we've got a, a window's going to shut once they do Route 31. We really couldn't revisit it, it's going to be much more expensive. So with that, I'm, I'm concurring with Alderman Cummings. Thank you.
Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, I know Chuck Alderman Brown wanted to speak, but...
I defer Alderman Flanagan.
A time, so the timeline, or the time calendar, or however you look at it, would be that the Phase One would come before, to address IDOT, and then the hearing, public hearings or meetings would come afterwards, after IDOT had...
Yes, it's, it's my, it's my opinion that we would prefer, that I think it makes sense to prefer to hear from IDOT based on the Phase One Modified before holding a community-wide forum, is that the community-wide forum says, you know, yeah, we love it, and IDOT says, well, you shouldn't have had that because we don't approve it.
Okay.
Or the community forum says, we hate it, well, then we tell our residents, well, hold on, we don't even know if we can do it yet, it just looks awkward.
Okay.
I, I think. Would you agree, Tom?
I, I think that's why we did this preliminary assessment, to find out whether it was worth our while.
Sure.
To get at least a flavor from the folks who run it. In no way, shape, or form are these the people that are necessarily impacted by it. There's a whole slew of other folks that need to be involved in this, and participate and get their voice. We may be completely mistaken again that these folks are supportive of it, or a good chunk of them are, and the outside community that uses that road for whatever, the Metro or whatever, may not be supportive of it. So I think we've done the right thing by at least doing our homework in trying to get to 267 homes that are immediately impacted by it, to get a sense as to whether we take the next step. So I think I agree with you, Mayor, that the next step is, if IDOT now supports it, which is more important than getting everybody in a room, because IDOT doesn't care what everybody else thinks, that we'd be wasting our time, in my opinion, without IDOT's support.
And I still have the floor, I think. And in, have we talked, and I, I do recall the, the comment about the safety and the garbage trucks and the fire department vehicles, et cetera, have we ever, or has this discussion evolved to that?
It has not been vetted by professional staff, other than conversations with Mr. Schreiber and others, because there's really, quite frankly, no point to do so.
Until you have drawings and you can actually show them.
And then everyone gets to weigh in, you know, whether it be our, our public safety team, or our public works team, you name it.
Okay. Well, I think it's worth a look-see. I don't know if I could support the project if it was going to be over a certain budget item, and at this point in time, I don't know if $208,000 is going to cover, or whatever. But I think to take the first initial step to see if IDOT is willing to go to this direction, because I know IDOT was pretty strict in a lot of other areas where we tried to have streets changed and became more of a hassle than we really anticipated and walked away from it, so I'll try it.
Alderman Brown?
Thank you. I think we've confused it somewhat with the $208,000. Most years, we have capital projects that carry over from one year to the other, because typically we plan and do preliminary engineering in the winter, and then the project's constructed the next summer. So this is not unusual to have something, it means that the council intends to go forward with this project unless something comes up. We portion, portion the money and show it in the capital budget. So in this case, I'm asking, why would we not just take some amount, some standard amount like 50,000 or 60,000, transfer it from the general fund into capital? Our general fund budget this year was balanced, we can do that without having to quote, break the budget, and specify it for this project in order to go forward? And I think we should go forward at this point and decide whether or not, and if we need a cubby hole in the capital budget, this doesn't need to be entitled, construct the road diet on Route 31. This can be given a name, proceed with, proceed with investigating the engineering and the planning and preliminary engineering for a diet project on Route 31. And then it, I think the $208,000 is confusing at this point. What we're asking is, does this project, interestingly enough to enough people on the council, to take some money under the, under the general fund, which is currently showing surplus, transferring it to the capital fund, knowing that it may not get used, it may get used, some of it may get transferred to next year? And next year, we may have to indeed, if we go ahead with it, increment it with another capital budget item, which is the actual construct, which is any additional funds that would be needed to actually construct it if we get it that, that far. So I think that this thing is just a little bit of a confusion to me, and I would be willing to put some amount of money to, and I, I'm not in a position to know exactly what that is, but it's a lot less than $208,000, which allows us for the rest of this fiscal year to proceed with planning and if necessary, preliminary engineering on the diet project for Route 31.
I, I think just one clarification, if you're, if you're suggesting to take 50,000 or whatever from the general fund, move it to capital fund, you're talking about dipping into your reserves.
Right, and this is, this is a capital commitment already, this is from the same fund.
Right, the capital is a separate budget.
I understand, it's just a question of how you're identifying the money.
But I mean, so you would be then going below your council policy of what you said your reserves should... your reserves should be and tapping into your reserves, because although the general fund is balanced, it's balanced with expenditures and revenues. So there's already expenditures laid out in the general fund to make it a balanced budget, so you would be using reserves and moving those to the capital fund.
Would we have to go below that today, given the state of our reserve fund today? Would we have to go below...
I think right now, we're below our reserves right now at the end of the last fiscal year. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think we were under the 90 days.
Well, I'm asking right now, in October.
Well, keep in mind...
The six-month review or the three-month review of our current fiscal...
I don't have that information in front of me.
But keep in mind, this $208,000...
Is a placeholder.
Exactly. It's, it's already budgeted for. Now, one question might be, where did we come up with this number? Here's how I came up with the number. I asked point-blank, what's the worst-case scenario for a Phase Two or a Phase One Modified? Could be between 30 and 50 grand. What's the worst-case scenario for a restriping of Route 31 from Elizabeth all the way to the Forest Preserve entrance? The worst-case scenario, between 75 and $100,000. So I did the math and thought, well, that equals X. Where do we have X available to appropriate as a placeholder? The only place we had that kind of money with a little bit of cushion was the Fourth Street parking lot improvements.
Then why don't we take a, take 50 or 60 out of the 208 and not, not move the whole 208? Invent a new category and move some of this money. We can re-appropriate our budget at any time during the year.
Absolutely. You're right, we can.
So to me, that's a little cleaner if, if indeed we're at...
But don't confuse with only moving a little bit with the fact that we can still do the Fourth Street lot, though.
Yeah.
That's what I want to make certain to know.
No, at this point in the year, we're not going to do that construction until next fiscal year.
Well, no, we, we...
Construction was planned for spring, which is this fiscal year.
Which is still this fiscal year. What we're saying tonight is, I respect the importance of the Fourth Street commuter parking lot, but I believe the proposal on the road diet is more important. That's the question tonight.
Did we lay any asphalt before May 1st this year? It was still snowing on May 1st, wasn't it?
That's the question.
But even if that was the case, we'd still have to choose between asphalt on Fourth Street or asphalt on...
Well, yes. I mean, if, if our budget falls apart this year and we have no money left at the end of the year, we're going to have to choose on a lot of different capital projects, whether we continue with them or not. That happens every year at budget time.
Right, but we're not deferring. We're, we're shifting here.
Question is, are we creating a new pocket?
No.
And how much are we going to put in that? This is a new item, we're going to identify it, and we're going to put some money in there. That money is just an allocation at this point, it's not actually spent.
We're changing the rubric. That's all we're doing.
Mr. Simoni?
Chuck, your concept, 50, 60, whatever it is, is a placeholder. I mean, I don't have a problem. The only concern I have is making sure, because I've run into this issue since last November, is city staff's time. If we're, if they're going to appropriate time for the Fourth Street project, and we're going to, and we're going to lose that, this is part of the reason we are here where we are today, is because staff during the winter months and everything else, obviously, during winter, was stretched so thin, and we were trying to get them involved in this opportunity. And that's my only concern, is because again, April's going to be here faster than we know it, and we still have to get the public involved.
You clarified that. By moving the $208,000, we're actually implying moving city staff effort from a project which we all planned to go ahead.
Right.
Because it's a project that supposedly breaks even with commuter fees eventually, to a project which may not break even. So...
And may cost us nothing.
Yeah. And I don't think, in my opinion, I don't think it's not doing the Fourth Street project, it's just deferring to an opportunity that's time-sensitive. And that's my opinion.
Anyone else from the dais? Any, anyone from the audience? Mr. Kendall, you look wildly concerned over there.
Uh...
No? Okay, good. No comment.
At this time, there's things on that that haven't been discussed.
And Mr., it should be noted, too, that you will note, there's no staff recommendation. Mr. Schreiber has not been asked to give a professional opinion on whether we should or shouldn't pursue. We've simply asked Brian to make inquiries to IDOT with Geneva Construction, et cetera, and he's presented the facts as they are. So this responsibility falls squarely on our shoulders. That's it. And of course, even if we choose tonight to say, "Yeah, let's, let's rename the priority and call it this," then we still have the opportunity and the obligation to talk to the citizens and business owners. I mean, you know, there's businesses along that route as well. Mr. Cummings?
When is, when was the last time that Route 31 was paved over? Does anyone remember?
Ten-plus years, right?
Long time.
Repaved, you mean? Or reconstructed, repaved?
Well, I've lived there 16 years in it.
You just didn't do it in front of your house.
I just, the reason, the reason I ask is, I, I think that occasionally, you know, Fourth, Fourth Street is not going anywhere, the parking lots are not going anywhere. The opportunity to pave them is not going anywhere. On the other hand, there is a potential opportunity, it may not be an opportunity, but there's a potential opportunity that comes up once every at least 16 years or 20 years, sort of like the locusts. And so, I wouldn't want to look back in four years and say, and have to justify to somebody, "Why didn't you at least look at that?" Because the next time we're able to really look at it for the same amount of money, it's going to be, whatever the math is, 2035 or something. I, so that, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Mr. Kilburg?
Yeah. Was there any discussion about acquiring a portion of personal property there to widen it? I mean, I think the big issue, and you, you know, it's, it's really not fair to compare the extension of State Street on the east side or Kirk Road, because the right-of-way is much wider. What we need on 31 is probably an additional six feet on both sides of the, of 31. And the people that are supportive of this initiative, are they prepared to, to, to sell, are any of the residents along there prepared to sell any land to the state or to the city to, to help widen and create more space? Because those lanes are, the problem is, those lanes are so narrow, and what we need is, we need width.
No doubt about...
That, at least on, on one side, or probably on the east side, there is probably an additional three to four, maybe five feet that could be, could be tremendous benefit to any type of a project that we're looking at here. So I guess my question is, is any of those that are supportive of the project prepared to volunteer and, and make their land available to the city or to the state to, to help get that accomplished?
Dean, there's no, there's no doubt about it, that road is not wide enough. Two lanes, four lanes, whatever, bike paths, no matter what. I don't think it's a question of, because the question has never been asked to the residents who live along it. I think the thing is, the appetite of IDOT to go into major construction in widening that road. And Brian probably has a better pulse on it than I do, but it sounds like IDOT doesn't have any appetite at all of taking that stretch of road and investing in land and widening it. And now you're talking about infrastructure, you're talking about sewers, you're talking about everything. I mean, that becomes now a major project that we can submit, and I think it will sit on their books in 12 years from now, they'll, you know, they'll get to it. This was one of those, how can we impact the safety, the flow, the east side entrance, and the, and, and a bike path connecting the Fox River Trail, which, which has been obviously adopted since 2005? And, and this was a way to do it that was easy for IDOT to possibly approve. So the answer, I don't think anybody's asked anybody on the street if they're willing to give a plan, but I don't know that that is...
Well, the reason I ask is because we're going to commence with that on, on the, the East State Street enhancements that we're looking at down the road here over the next two or three years, because there, there is going to be personal property involved that we're going to be looking to purchase, or, and that's the state's responsibility to get that, to get that done. But I'm just saying, if in fact we're really looking at a long-term solution here, are we, are we, are we taking the best approach? And I guess when I'm, when I'm heading north and south, and I'm going between Geneva and Batavia at 5:00 in the afternoon, am I going to go down 25 or am I going to go down 31? And I'll probably go down 31, because I know that I'll get through that light at Fabian probably a lot quicker than I will on, on 25 and Fabian. Because a lot of times, it's, it's backed up on 25 all the way back to the Forest Preserve entrance, and a lot of times, you'll have one or two lights that'll change before you'll get through there. So I guess I, I'm trying to understand how this is going to move people more quickly along...
I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree that it's going to move people quickly.
Right.
It's going to move people at a more safe, at a safer pace.
Well, then, maybe we need to look at widening 31, then, if we're really looking at safety and moving people.
Oh, I, I don't disagree, I don't disagree with you. It's not, it's not an issue of what we want, it's an issue of what we can get done. And I, and I don't believe that what we want is anything that IDOT wants to get done in the near future. They may put it on their agenda, I mean, East State Street, what you're talking about, that project wasn't a six-month, "Hey, we got an idea, we're going to widen State Street." That was a, I don't know how many years that project has been going on, but it's not an overnight project. The, you know, the other thing, too, is that when you get into this, to IDOT, I mean, IDOT's going to do all the traffic counts and everything. If they don't feel comfortable that that traffic is not going to, it, it's going to back up or anything, they will not allow this to happen. I mean, that's the first thing they're going to look at, is traffic counts and making sure that a road diet can accommodate the traffic needs, because they're not just going to sit back and look at, you know, 12,000 cars or 10,000 cars, is my guess. They're going to look at, when do, if 10 of those 12,000 cars come within a two-hour period, there's an issue. So they're going to track all that, and they're going to make their determination based off of their, their engineering and their expertise, is my guess.
So, one last question. So, and Phil Bus's opinion then, is, was he saying then that the roundabout at Third Street and 31 then was going to be a critical element of this project as well?
No, no, that's, no, not at all. That's not, that's not even part of this project.
But it would extend to that point, right?
It will extend, yeah, it will extend to, extend to Third Street, where it already goes down to a single lane with a turn lane. That's, that's already in existence. It would just pick, it would just, you know, that, that turn lane would be for the extent, the entire extent of the project, that middle turn lane. And then it goes down from that point further north, it goes to a single lane already with no turn lane. So, you know, if you're looking at tra, if you're looking at traffic, I mean, this is just my opinion, I don't believe all the traffic stops at Third Street and goes left or right. Traffic still flows in a single lane with no turn lane from that point all the way through St. Charles, and I mean, and you're not going to tell me that traffic is backed up all the way between us and North Avenue, and actually even further, further north until it turns into two lanes.
Would the feasibility of that roundabout, though, be a part of this project, then? Because I know that that has been a topic that's been discussed...
Yeah.
...as it relates to Third and, and 31 for some time.
I think it's a cost issue.
Where does, where does that fall, fall out in, in this discussion, then? Is it, is it, is it a separate issue?
I think it's a separate issue with regards to this discussion, because that, that in and of itself is another, I think, engineering project and another, I think that's a big cost that we are going to absorb a great deal of.
But don't you think that that would be a part of really what we're looking at here as far as 31? And I mean, the two are, and really, the two are connected at the hip, because that's going to have a huge part to play in, in how you're moving people...
Well, I, I...
...dispersing, dispersing 31.
Everything you say is absolutely correct, but the one thing you fail to build this, build this argument on is the foundation of time. We have between now and April, and none of this, what you're, is going to move any quicker than what, the, the absolute quickest we could possibly get something done is what we've got in the plan right now. And that's even pushing it, I think, time-wise. And then, we don't have any idea what costs, but I just think, we're up against time. Time is our enemy here. Everything you said, I totally agree with and support and absolutely, but unfortunately, we don't have, we don't have the time.
My experience, Tom, is, is that a lot of times haste makes waste, and when you do things with, with an unreasonable sense of urgency. I'm sure the state has the latitude to come back in three months and say, "Well, we don't have the funds any longer, and that project's going to be delayed another two years."
Mm-huh.
Because that's happened before. And we're going to commit time and resources, and it's, it's conceivable with the state of affairs in, at Spring, in Springfield, that after we get through the election, all of a sudden, guess what? The money's not there. And, and again, that's a risk that you run with anything, but I'm just saying...
Yeah.
You know, we're moving pretty quickly here, because within about, you know, we got this on Thursday, and then there were questions raised today, and then we're trying to make a decision to really move forward with, with some haste. Is, is that something that we've really reflected on? And is this going to be a, a good decision that's going to serve the community well for the long term? That's what, I'm just asking questions.
No, I understand. And I, and I, and I agree with the...
Now's the time to have that discussion.
I agree with a tremendous amount of what you're saying. The only thing that we, like I said, is there's a factor we have neither one of us have any control over, and that's the time we have here to do this, and so...
Thank you.
Mr. Maladra, and then Mr. Brown?
Right. So, a lot, a lot of this exchange, I, I keep hearing in context of a decision to actually do this. And I started out by saying, what we're looking to do is take a step to bring facts into the conversation. There's a question about whether or not there's enough room to pull off two, one lane in each direction plus a turn lane. Let's get some facts that show whether or not it's possible. There's some question about whether or not having one lane in each direction makes sense on the south part of Route 31, even though it already exists that way on the north part of Route 31. Let's get some facts into that discussion as well. I don't view this prioritization decision as being necessarily a commitment to do the road diet, as much as I view it as a commitment to find out if the road diet makes sense in terms of something other than opinion and emotion. Let's get some facts on the table so that we can make good decisions, as Alderman Kilberg is asking for. Second thing, and I almost hate to bring this up, does anybody, when is the Union Pacific expected to put the third...
That's, that's a great question. It's anticipated, as all of us know, that the Union Pacific will be adding, Metra will be adding a third line, not a third rail.
Excuse me.
I'm just kidding you. Never touch the third rail, Mr. Kendall.
Yeah.
But the third line will be coming in, we have been told, fiscal year 16.
Okay.
Is that our concern or is it...
Ours, ours, yeah. So I mean, you know, again, that could change, too, but Alderman Brown?
Yeah, I agree 100% with Alderman Maladra, that I think what I'm interested in doing now is taking the next step. It sounds to me like an interesting enough project. And as I understand it, the state at this point agrees to go ahead and grind overlay and stripe it with two lanes. The first question is, will they allow us to restripe it with one lane? How much money and how much staff time will it take to answer that question? And can't we find that amount of money? And can we find that amount of staff time? That's the question that I would hope that the majority of the council would say yes to at the moment. It's just take that next step, because as Alderman Maladra pointed out so well, we have to decide whether this project, whether the state is going to accept what we think makes sense, because indeed, Route 31 is two lanes through most of town. So what's the answer to my question? What, then just the next step, which is going to the state with a proposal for restriping to two lanes?
The challenge with answering your question is, then, we've provided you with a T for you to hit the driver with, an amendment to the motion. So, because you're asking, what's the minimum amount of money we should allocate?
Yes.
Okay. I don't know.
The question is priority.
Yeah, and the question, again, is priority. Is this worth our time?
Well, I'm asking both. I mean...
The short answer is, I don't know.
Okay.
We understand from the residents along 31 that Phase 1...
Since this is an item we cannot take, we cannot take action on tonight, we could ask, the council could ask staff to please come back to the council meeting next week with those numbers and that time. What, what is it that staff is going to have to slow down on in order to fit this in to answer that first question?
The construction of the Fourth Street parking lot.
And how much money are we going to have to reprogram in order to accomplish that next step? And how much money are we going to have to reprogram in order to accomplish that next step? And that includes, that step, I believe, includes having to go to IDOT with a sufficiently detailed document on how we want it to re-stripe so that they have something to say yes or no to. And then come back to us at the next meeting at the council meeting, and we can, so if the staff tonight, if the council tonight, a majority says, yes, we want to take that next step, the next step is, this is an item for consideration tonight. We're asking the.
The item is to take action tonight. You can take action tonight to reprioritize what the capital projects are and move not only the money, but the staff time from the Fourth Street projects to the road diet and make that now the priority.
Okay, well, then, that would not be the motion I would like to see on the table. I would like to see a motion that says, please come back to us next week with the information on what has to slow down, by how much, and how much money we have to reprogram. We certainly don't need two hundred and eight thousand to do the next step.
Mr. Schreiber?
Myself and my staff, we've been working on getting ready to come to you with plans for Fourth Street parking lot. I've already been dealing with consultant. I thought we would get a proposal from them to do the design documents and be prepared to go out for bids on that with the thought that that would be ready for construction first thing in the spring. You know, if the council so decides, you know, I will put that Fourth Street parking lot project off on the shelf and, you know, divert our attention towards whatever project you deem.
For how long is your guess? I mean, just creating a document to submit to the state, asking them whether they will allow re-striping for two lanes instead of four?
That would not be a function of my staff time. That would be the modified Phase One study that IDOT's asking for.
Okay, and again, that would be some of your staff time. Who's kidding who here? You're saying mostly it's paying the consultant to create the document that gets sent to IDOT for them to say yes or no.
Correct.
And we have to take that step, or else everything we're talking about is in the clouds somewheres. Okay.
And just to add another wrinkle to the thing, we're not sure how long IDOT will take to review once they get that document. There is no guarantee they're going to review that by April.
Yeah. I mean, one of our early conversations we had with IDOT when we first learned about this modified Phase One requirement, they warned us at that time that it could take up to a year for them to review this modified Phase One. So, it would be incumbent upon us that, once we do submit it, that we let them know that this is an urgent matter to be tied in with the re-striping project in April.
That's staff time. You don't beat on IDOT without spending time.
That's right.
Anything else, Alderman Brown?
No, thank you.
Alderman Flanagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, with that said, two hundred and eight, was that the entire amount that was put to the Fourth Street parking? Or was it a portion?
My understanding is that was the total amount for that Fourth Street parking project.
Was two hundred and eight thousand? Okay, so it would be the whole entire amount that we were shifting, so to say.
That's correct. It was the full amount already allocated to the Fourth Street. And when I say Fourth Street lots, we're talking those off of Crescent and Fourth Street near the train station, not over near Fireman's Pizza and what have you, so. Anything else, Alderman Flanagan?
No, that's a.
Alderman Simoni?
So, if we agree to this, and let's fast-forward this to January, and we find out IDOT says, no way, we don't feel comfortable with this, we then can reallocate the two hundred and eight thousand dollars back to the Fourth Street project.
Yes, sir.
And have it up and running possibly by April, no harm, no foul. Very easy, very palatable. If we allocate fifty thousand dollars to this, and IDOT comes back and says, yes, and we find out it's going to be a hundred and fifty thousand, we're going to go back and we're going to have to find a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars more. So, in that case there, we've got the Fourth Street project, and we've got another project at the same time. So, we're going to have to find additional capital. So, in my opinion, although the concept, Chuck, is sound, I think at the end of the day, there could be some negative impact to doing it that way and actually put us in a more uncomfortable situation that we are allocating now additional if we want to get this project done, or going back to the Fourth Street project to say, okay, now let's move the two hundred and eight. And if, let's just say, IDOT says, yep, we like the program, you can move ahead. We go through all the gymnastics, and the cost is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the improvements. Then we replenish the capital fund by another fifty-eight thousand dollars, and we, excuse me, hopefully reallocate for Fourth Street in the next fiscal.
And you would agree with the mayor that the two hundred and eight is a number which is probably a lot bigger than is really needed, and except in case something funny happens.
I have no idea. I'm relying on the mayor's experience and Brian's experience that this is an adequate amount. But I don't think, really, any of us know at this point until we get back, we hear back from this first phase, this first phase of what, you know, what it's going to entail with respect to us, our part.
Do we ask for just the re-striping, or the re-striping plus a median? What would Brian's suggestion on that be? Do you do it as two steps, or?
My understanding from our preliminary discussions with IDOT, their vision of the diet cross-section was going to be three eleven-foot-wide lanes and then a four-foot lane on the outside of those three lanes. There was no mention of any kind of median or anything like that. It would be a joint turn lane in the middle.
So, it's basically just re-striping?
Yes, sir.
And if that's the case, and if what Brian says is possibly true, that timing, if timing is correct, may not even be any cost for re-striping. So, our only cost would be the Phase One engineering, and staff time, of course.
Well, the Phase One modified engineering, and Mr. Bruno asked this question, will.
Will be covered by the Good Samaritans.
The Good Samaritans, right.
And so, the cost to the city could possibly be nothing.
Right.
And two hundred and eight thousand could be allocated back to the other project. I don't know, I'm just, I'm guessing like everybody else, but until we get to that next step.
But your argument is we have to do it tonight just because of this delay that it's going to take to get this whole thing through IDOT?
I just think that, I mean, only, I've been at it since November, and here we are almost a year. And what little I've been involved in, I now understand why you want to get on these things sooner than later. Because I think come April, I don't think anybody's going to pause with, okay, yeah, let's hold off for another month or another two months. I think it's going to be, we're ready to go. We're starting a project. So, in my opinion, I say, I support this kind of a move to begin with. And then, like I said.
So, you support the motion that's.
As is.
The motion was offered by Alderman Marx, seconded by Alderman Simoni. It has written in item nine A.
Is it appropriate to call it question?
With such enthusiasm? Alderman Kilberg, perhaps, are you, anything else? Question's been called. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll, a simple majority carries the day.
Chuck Brown?
Aye.
Mike Bruno?
Aye.
Ron Cummings?
Aye.
Dorothy Flanagan?
Aye.
Dean Kilberg?
Aye.
Greg Malodra?
Aye.
Richard Marx?
Aye.
Mary Sino?
Aye.
Tom Simoni?
Aye.
Ron Singer?
Aye.
Item nine A passes unanimously. New business, ladies and gentlemen? Any new business tonight from anyone in the audience? From the dais? Mr. Kilburg?
I just want to congratulate the Kane County Cougars on winning the Midwest League title.
Very exciting.
Only, I believe, the second time in twenty-three years. And hopefully, they can find a way to renegotiate with the Cubs and keep that franchise here in Geneva.
When's the next home game, this Thursday?
They're done. They won the title.
They won the title.
They're done.
Well, hell, we can go play.
At least somebody with a Cubs name is winning.
They're my only league clubs, though.
I think the important thing is here, we have to realize that the King County Cougars bring over four hundred thousand fans to our city on an annual basis, and that it's an attraction and generates a lot of commerce in the city. And we wish them well. I know that, as it relates to the negotiations with the Cubs right now, it involves some improvements at the facility and a great venue for family entertainment. So, we thank them for coming to Geneva, and let's hopefully continue to support them in 2015.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Motion to adjourn is in order.
Come on.
Motion by Simoni, seconded by Alderman Marx. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, microphones are off, cameras are dark.